All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 6, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm sorry for the unexpected change, but due to some family circumstances, I have to be remote this evening. So at any point, if you guys have trouble hearing me, just stop and let me know. But hopefully, we can prove that we can do this smoothly in a virtual world. So with that, Steph, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
Did she say Steph or Steph? I don't know.
Go ahead, Steph.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The folks like, yep. All right. Thank you very much. I did say Steph. You're right.
Oh, okay.
So she said me? No, just kidding.
Do we have anyone in person or electronically send in citizens input this evening?
Nobody in person and nobody electronically.
No one there? I can see one head there.
Nobody in person. He's for the next item on the agenda, and nobody emailed anything in.
Okay. All right. Wonderful. Great. So with that, we have our first item, 705 Jake &amp; Joe's Application for Change of Manager. Is everyone ready in the room for that one?
Come to the microphone.
Sit down.
Yeah, I can have a seat, Jeff. We have with us tonight Jeff Reddington, who is the proposed new manager for Jake &amp; Joe's.
Hi. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Pretty good. Thought you said Jeff say the Pledge of Allegiance. I was a little worried about that. Didn't forget the words.
All right. So do you want to just let us know, you know, what's going on up at Jake &amp; Joe's and just give us an overview? And then we'll see if we have any questions for you?
Yes. So I'm the new general manager over at Jake &amp; Joe's. I've been there since April 27th. So that was the end of April is when I started. We've, you know, been picking up as the COVID guidelines have opened up across the state. And, you know, with that, we've just had our number one priority to make sure, you know, guests are having a safe and fun time. We are a little short staff, as you may know, with the restaurant industry. So training right now is paramount for us. And that's kind of where we're at right now. We are on the topic of the liquor license. So I myself, I'm served safe certified. I have been in the hospitality industry for 15 years. So I'm no stranger to a proper, you know, guest experience. And our staff is certified. And that's, again, just one of the number one priorities we have. We do. We also have a, we've had some recent additions to the restaurant. We did add a temporary patio. It runs parallel to our parking lot, if you guys are familiar with that. That is temporary. The plan is to take that down come the fall. I think it was the weekend of Columbus Day. So that will be not a permanent structure. And that's pretty much it. I'm happy that people are going out again, for sure. So that's the Jake &amp; Joe's update for you.
All right. Great. Any questions in the room?
Leah, I have a question.
Yeah, of course. Go ahead.
Thanks. So I was just curious if you've made any changes from a strategic perspective or management perspective since you joined in April 27th, from sort of the old guy to the new? And just, I'm not looking for anything in particular, just your thoughts on...
Yes. So I'm coming from a corporate environment. If you're familiar with Darden Restaurant Group. So I came from Yard House, which was, I was up in Burlington. So, you know, just a lot of the day-to-day routines were kind of, you know, heightened some awareness around as far as in that, if you're familiar with restaurant.
The Yard House?
Or just restaurant, you know, day-to-day activities, you know, just having more of a structured day. Start, you know, we count the money certain times of day, you know, make sure we're there for the team at certain hours. We're there, you know, in the office at certain hours. So just kind of getting more of a structured environment. And, you know, the guest experience being the number one priority is what I'm all about. So bringing that down there.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Yep.
And also, Jeff, who is, so will the liquor license be kept in the same person who it's in now? Or was it the manager before? Will it be you at some point?
So the manager beforehand has left the company. So it will be put into my name.
So that'll be your next, the next step? You guys will be coming before us to request that as well?
Yes. That is not what this...
That's the purpose of this time.
That's the purpose of this.
Oh, okay.
Change of manager.
Yep.
Okay. I just saw change manager. I don't see, I didn't see anything, anything written here saying that we're also switching the license. So I, my mistake.
Any other questions? All right. And I don't think we mentioned it, but you know about Fox Cares, too, the local group in Foxborough that's run by Tom at Tavallino. So if you don't know about it, just check in on that. They've seen your temporary patio. It's nice. Hopefully, it stays.
Yes.
But I know everyone's got business priorities and dealing with a lot right now. So thanks for hanging in there during a difficult time like this. And I don't think there's any questions. We're probably ready for a motion.
Motion to approve the change of manager for Grand Slam Restaurant Concepts, Foxborough, doing business as Jake &amp; Joe's, from Frank Rokes to Jeff Reddington.
I'll second that.
All right. Great. Any further discussion? And because we are remote tonight, because I am remote, even though everyone else is in person, we do have to take a roll call. So we're going to go in the order that you are seated in the room. So we'll go Seth, Steph, Ed, and then me. So if you can just say your name and then yes to take the vote for all items this evening.
Seth Ferguson?
Yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed O'Leary, yes.
Leah, yes. All right. Great. Well, thanks, Jeff.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good luck.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good luck, Jeff.
All right. So next up, we have 710, but I see Lindsay is here. And I assume, ready, Lindsay, is anyone else joining you or is it just you tonight?
It's me today.
Okay. All right. Great. So we have another kind of run-of-the-mill liquor license item tonight, which is NPS LLC doing business at Gillette Stadium, change of hours for on-premises annual all alcohol beverage. So this gives them the ability to start serving food earlier on Sundays and certain legal holidays. So it takes it from noon to 10:00 a.m. So just like Jeff did, Lindsay, if you can just give us a really quick overview of what you're looking to do here, then we'll see if you have any questions and take a vote.
Yep. So it's basically super straightforward. We're just requesting to bump up that time. Nothing of our operation is going to change from before COVID. That's how we were operating in 2018 and 2019. So we're just asking that we bump up that actual license to... Sorry. There's like a little message on the bottom.
Oh, yes. So this is a public hearing. So we do have to read a notice. I'm sorry for that, Lindsay.
No worries.
So we're just going to have Seth read the public hearing notice. I apologize. When you're ready, Seth.
So I'm opening up the document. And that's in the public hearing, change of hours, NPS.
Yeah. I can, I have it open, too. I can read it if you have any trouble.
So the Town of Foxborough Public Hearing, right? That's where, okay. "The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL, Chapter 140, Section 181 and Section 183a, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Chapter 141 of the Acts of 2020, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at 7:10 p.m. in the Gallum Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, meeting also being held virtually. Instructions to be provided when Board of Selectmen meeting agenda is posted. To review the application submitted by NPS LLC, doing business as Gillette Stadium for the application of a change of hours of an on-premises annual all alcohol beverage license. One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass., Manager James Nolan. All interested parties are welcome to attend."
All right. Great. So sorry.
So Madam Chair and members of the board, this item is, just to add that this is a, it changes the hours of alcohol service as well as food. So, and the board will maybe familiar with the fact that we do have a provision in the state statute that allows for communities to allow restaurants to serve prior to noontime. Typically, it will be a noontime opening for the license. But because, but on Sundays and holidays, you can actually serve from before noon until by 10 o'clock. No earlier than 10 o'clock by statute. So locally, the town has adopted this traditionally every single year since that has been adopted. And so this is, but it is something that the various license holders have to request as part of their license request every single year. So this is why they're here before you tonight.
And Lindsay, this is for the actual stadium, not for a restaurant on property. This is for the actual stadium. Is that correct?
Yep. It's for the stadium. And like Bill had said, this is what we had done in the past, and nothing about the gate times or anything like that is going to change. We're just, we're going to operate the same way that we've been before. But obviously, this is just a housekeeping item that we want to come to the board.
Okay. Great. I don't have any questions. Seth, Steph, Ed, any questions in the room?
No. What's that, Leah?
Anyone in the audience there? I know it's a public hearing before we close that out.
There's no one here at this point.
Your head now? Okay. So now we just need a motion to close the public hearing, Seth.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? And we just need to roll call that, and then we'll go into a motion for the actual approval after this vote on the motion to close the public hearing.
Seth Ferguson, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed O'Leary, yes.
Leah, yes.
All right. So we'll move on to the motion?
Yes, please.
"Motion to approve the application for change of hours for on-premises annual all alcohol beverage license accompanied by food service from 12:00 p.m. on Sundays and on certain legal holidays to 10:00 a.m. on Sundays and on certain legal holidays."
And just under further discussion, I don't think we have Gillette Stadium in the motion, but that's what it's for, just to clarify it. Any further discussion? All right. I think we're ready for the roll call and the motion then.
Seth, yes.
Stephanie, did we second it? We seconded.
Oh, so I didn't, I don't, I don't think.
No, you made the motion. I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay.
Seth Ferguson, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed O'Leary, yes.
Leah, yes. All right. Great. Lindsay, are you hanging on with us for the last item? Or the Monster Jam? Or we don't need you for that, right?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. I want you to hang on to the very end, just in case you planned on it. So.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Thanks, Lindsay.
Thanks, Lindsay.
All right. So we are running right on schedule. The next item is Board of Selectmen Committee Member Appointments. So you may remember that, you know, we renewed all the appointments last meeting, but there are some committees that we have to appoint someone from our board to. CIP Committee, for example, that appointment ended June 30th. So we're back now to appoint one of the five of us. And I know historically, it's been the chair. It's not written that it has to be the chair. And, you know, my perspective is I like to spread the love and the duties and the roles and responsibilities within the board. So is there anyone interested in CIP and/or audit committees on the board? I'm certainly happy to keep them, but if anyone is interested in that.
I'd actually be very interested in the CIP.
Okay. Anyone for audit?
I'll take audit.
You'll take audit, Ed? Okay. All right. Great. So I think we need motions for those, right? I don't see a motion in here, but it's pretty simple then. If there's any further discussion, unless, you know, Seth, if you were interested in either and we needed to discuss, or we want to let Steph and Ed take these two?
I would move to appoint Stephanie to the CIP Committee.
All right. Great.
I'll second it. Sounds kind of weird.
Any further discussion?
Ian acting as Doc tonight.
Yeah. And I think we're going to move this appointment through June 30th, 2022. Would you agree, Bill, so we can close out budget season? That's typically when we're all done, as we head into the July 1st new fiscal year.
That is correct.
Okay. So that, this appointment will go through June 30th, 2022, Christina, for the records. All right. So with that, I think we're ready for a roll call. We've had a motion. We've seconded it. Clarified?
Seth is yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
I move to appoint Ed O'Leary to the Audit Committee.
I'll second.
Under further discussion, Bill, is this also till June 30th? Or will this be till June 1st or May 31st? Sorry.
I wouldn't make it till June 30th. I don't know that there is a reason to do it another time, but I think it's cleaner if you just do it by June 30th.
So all of our other appointments end May 31st? So unless there's something that would go with the fiscal year, I'd probably keep it at May 31st.
Well, the only reason why I was thinking, when I said make it cleaner, sometimes the audit comes in later than that. And so you may want to just leave that open until then for that reason.
Okay. Sounds good to me. So it'll be till June 30th of 2022?
Yeah. Sorry for that clarification.
All right. So we had a motion. We had a second, I think. Unless I'm not tracking, we're probably ready for a vote then, right?
Seth is yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes. All right. So 725 Boards and Committee Handbook. I'll probably hand this over to you, Mike. We had put this on here in case we were ready to approve it, but I do not believe Town Council has weighed in on this. So I think we'd be looking for a summary from you on what we've done here, maybe some of the changes that we have talked about, and then when we anticipate to hear back from Town Council, how this wraps into all the appointments we did last meeting.
Sure. What we did is we cleaned this up and modernized it. We did include several appendices in the back, the first of which lays out who the liaisons are to all the different boards, committees, and commissions. Another major thing that we included in here is, you know, Board Committee Commission Member Etiquette. So we're very clear on, you know, rules of the road, so to speak, for employees. And that's reflected in our policies. And we've included some of those similar things that would apply to volunteers and elected officials as anyone serving in any of these roles really is acting as an ambassador for the town, maybe on television, maybe, you know, approached by the press. And so we just want to be very clear about what the expectations of all of our Board Committee Commission members, in addition to our employees, is minor differences with employees, but still the same responsibility to uphold the ideals of the Town of Foxborough. So we did put also some guidelines on conducting meetings, some things to modernize as far as operating in the remote world, you know, with virtual meetings, and expectations. And, you know, the main point of that is that, you know, if you're operating remotely, you know, just as you can see, you know, Leah unexpectedly is joining this meeting virtually. But she's seated at a desk. She's prepared for the meeting. She's got all her notes and, you know, dressed appropriately, acting appropriately. And that stuff is very detailed in here. In other words, you wouldn't do anything on camera, at a virtual meeting, that you would, that you wouldn't do here, here at a public meeting. So, you know, appropriate language, appropriate dress, you know, head to toe, you know, no smoking, no eating or drinking, any of those things. And, you know, if somebody needs to leave this meeting while the thing's rolling, you do it while you're off camera and to get a note or to use the restroom or whatever. It's the same. If you're in a virtual meeting, you take yourself off camera and, of course, when you're not speaking, you take yourself off of audio. Those are some of the big things. We also do document in here things that are kind of normal practice, but just to memorialize them. We've talked about posting agendas, attendance at meetings, record keeping, and the public records law, open meeting law, all those sorts of things. We also talk about the use of Town Council, how the only time that Town Council can be used is by going through the Town Manager. And that's really so that, you know, so that there is a governor on, you know, where and when that's being used. It's not to limit the use of Council, because certainly there are times when we need to use that for limiting risk. But it's really so that the Town Manager, you know, knows where the money's being spent and can account for it. Let's see. Conflicts of interest, nothing new there, but we do talk about it as far as, you know, what the rules are. And again, that everybody, you know, requalifies on that every year. And then, you know, we've put some samples in the appendices here, Robert's Rules of Order. Again, nothing novel, but we've tried to put it all in one place so that anyone coming on to a Board Committee or Commission has this all in one place. And it'll also be electronically on the website. Talk a little bit about social media as well as executive session, the expectations, what's allowed, what's not allowed. And then, you know, the last appendix is one of the official holidays, and then a signature page on the back where anybody newly appointed to a Board Committee or Commission would sign that. And we'll start by doing that, you know, for current members as well. So that's kind of an overview. And that I would expect by your next meeting that we would have, you know, some feedback from Town Council. I would expect that this will go smoothly. But if he has guidance for us, then we'll fold this in and make changes as appropriate.
Mike, was there, I looked, but I didn't see it, but I may have missed it because there's a lot of information here. Is there anything about meeting attendance?
We did, so it wasn't initially in there, but that's one of the things that was in the old one. And we did, we did fold that in. If that was the intention, it should be in there. If it's not, it certainly will be.
Yeah. I was, you know, skimmed over it all. And I just, I may have just missed, you know, missed it.
That, when it was initially sent out, that was, well, prior to Friday. If you saw anything prior to Friday, it was not in there. Leah did bring that up at our pre-agenda meeting last week. So Katie did fold that in there, and I'll find out.
It is covered on page five.
Page five. Okay. Yeah. I mean, obviously, I mean, some of these are, well, they're all appointed by the Board of Selectmen or voted in. And of course, there's always, you know, excusable absences. I just, we just want to make sure that if somebody does want to make the commitment that, you know, there's some type of reasonable, how many meetings you would miss. Now, some of these committees, we're begging people to join. So it's not really, you know, but if it's where there are a number of people that do come forward and the chair or the committee is deciding who they think is the best fit, just to make sure that they're going to give as much of a commitment as they can. That's why I was just asking.
Sure.
So just to be specific, it does state in the last paragraph under the section Appointment, Reappointment, Resignation, Removal. It does state that in rare circumstances, unexplained absence of three or more instances during an appointment year or conflicts of interest, the appointment authority may have, may ask for a member's resignation. Prompt written notification to the committee member will be given by the appointed authority in the event of such action.
Perfect. Yeah. And listen, there's always, you know, every rule, there's a little bend there. You know, if somebody has a sickness and it, you know, it just goes on a little bit or something like that. I just wasn't sure if we had anything.
That's why we use the term "may" as opposed to "should."
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So our intent was to have this approved by Town Council by tonight, but we knew that it was kind of tight with the holiday and everything. So I don't believe, or I have not seen that Town Council has reacted to this or made any changes or blessed it. So we can either approve it pending their review, because I know we're eager to get the appointment letters out and get this up online and have people adhere, you know, acknowledge this as they're appointed. Or do we wait till the next meeting, Bill, after we've heard from Town Council and get the letters out then?
I would venture to guess, because this was actually a document that we utilized from another community. We took a lot of their information from that and then used this as a model and folded a lot of this information into ourselves. So if there's any changes at all, I would venture to guess to be minimal. So if you want, we can, I mean, we as the, you know, you as the board can approve it subject to any final changes by Town Council and then just, and then move forward. I tried to reach Town Council today to see if I could get them to respond to this by today, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to reach them. So it's entirely up to you. If you want to proceed that way, it's fine. It's entirely up to you.
Should she see me if I raise my hand?
I can see you. Go ahead.
Is it okay? Okay. Thanks, Leah. So just two thoughts around the document. I think it has improved with the additional content. And I think it's a great document and has the right information in there. The one thing, well, one thing that I'm thinking about is in terms of the tone of the document, what I would strive for, and I'm no editor by any means, but what I would strive for is particularly if it's, you know, if there's in any way a legal document that has any kind of legal ramifications?
Ramifications, yeah. Implications, yeah.
I would strive for as professional and formal as possible and as neutral a tone as possible. And I think by and large, it's that is achieved. Just a couple of points as I had to read through it. No offense to anyone who happened to write this, but certain things like be on time, early is on time, on time is late. That is sort of a colloquialism or, you know, it's just sort of an informal type of thing that perhaps is better worded in an official document like this. So that's just one thing. So I could read through it or however we want to. I don't have to, but it's just my...
I kind of, I kind of agree with you, Seth, and that's the virtual meeting etiquette. To me, it was the part I especially wanted Town Council to weigh in on because of like, this isn't time to multitask or don't waste anyone's time.
Yeah.
You know, I see what you mean in that particular. I assume that's the section that you're talking about?
Yeah. So that's what I'm looking at right now. That's what I just referenced. And the thing about wasting time, it's like, no one's joining a board to waste anyone's time. It's a little presumptive, you know, to think that anyone would want to waste anyone's time if they're volunteering, you know. So it's exactly, you're making the point, Leah, that I was getting across. So.
So those points are...
That's the section I wanted Town Council to kind of look at in particular as well.
Okay. So those points are well taken. So in addition to getting feedback from Town Council, we will do that, is a little more of an official tone.
Yeah.
Take out, you know, that sort of on-time stuff.
Yeah.
But deliver the same message, but without insulting people.
Neutral, neutral tone, same message. Yeah. Yep. And Leah, if I may, so that was one item. And then if I may, just on the second item that we chatted about briefly. On page 18, something that I thought was really interesting and probably useful point is liaison with Board of Selectmen, where each year, Board of Selectmen votes to assign each selectman to be a liaison to several town boards and committees. So I thought that is, so it's in the document. As a new person, I think that would be really impactful in helping me understand what the boards and committees, one, what they do. And I can read the town report, which is really useful to understand what boards and committees are doing. Going forward, boards and committees exist to make change, suggest policy presumably, or even create policy in some instances where it's mandated by state statute. in some instances where it's mandated by state statutes, what have you. But in order to understand the work that the boards and committees are doing and fold it into the work that we're doing as selectmen, I think that's a really impactful and great addition to this, whether it's been there the whole time. But I think that would be a good way to have the selectmen stay informed and sort of put a strategic lens on what the boards and committees are doing and making sure everything's aligned and heading in the direction that the town is intended. So that was just some feedback on that.
So this is, that particular section and some others are practices that do go on. But what we've done is we've captured a lot of those practices in one document. This is what we do.
Yeah, yeah. And so I guess I'm raising my hand. Like I would like to be a liaison to boards and committees that are, you know, doing meaningful, important work on behalf of the town. And I'd like to understand that and be able to be, you know, either help them progress as they're, with the work they're doing or just help guide or be knowledgeable as a board member, so.
Perfect.
And I think this kind of ties back to the communication plan too. So, you know, when we get the communication plan rolled out, hopefully there'll be more consistency with meeting minutes and people being able to subscribe to agendas and things like that. Because right now, you know, it is a little haphazard outside of, you know, the quote-unquote "main boards", you know, what's being sent out to people, minutes available online. So hopefully, as the communication plan rolls out this year, it'll be a lot easier for a liaison to track and keep with minutes, you know, instead of having to, you know, sit in every meeting. You can kind of, you know, hopefully watch them on cable access or catch up with minutes or both.
So how would you like to proceed, Madam Chair?
I think that we need, I don't think every board needs a liaison, like, I think we kind of have to group them together, like what's, almost like Christina did in the town report. So what's police and fire, what's recreation, council on aging, kind of lumped together? What's planning? What's conservation? And maybe group them together like that and then have us take boards. Does that sound like something we'd like to do?
I can do that. I can send out a list and see who's interested in what and then try to make it even and fair. And if there's any overlap, have a discussion about that and make a decision our next meeting.
Yeah, and I think there's some that, you know, we probably don't need a liaison for. I'd say it's probably more like half or three-quarters. Or maybe it's, you know, inviting certain boards to come in with an update throughout the year. Maybe it's just them sending a written report. So thoughts on that, Seth?
Yeah, that sounds reasonable. Those are great ideas, Leah. And there are several committees that I read about in the town report that I'm not really sure what they're working on. And, you know, their name, the work that they are tended to do is generally in the name, if it's a fields committee or something. But, you know, if they're spending time and energy to, you know, with work to move forward with certain initiatives, you know, I just wanted, I think we should be aware. But yeah, to your point, I think those, if there's written liaison-type documentation that they send in, I mean, sometimes some of these committees may not meet on a super regular basis. So every six months to a year, whatever is appropriate, depending on the board or committee. So I think that's fair to, as far as a plan.
In this past year, we had the department heads coming in. I thought that was great, especially, nobody knew that COVID was going to last what it did, but it was nice for us to just have a pulse on what was going on and how COVID was really affecting some of the works of departments in town. So it was, I found it very useful.
So is that a little different, Seth, as department heads versus boards and committees? So, or is it just?
Yeah, well, that was just, yeah. I was just saying that it was nice for them to come in and for us. And so then maybe for us, whether it's us doing the reach out to them and, you know, being assigned and then come back, almost like how we did on Advisor for Pretty. Then, so we all don't have to reach out and then come back and give a nice summary to the rest of the board. So we all, yeah, so we all have an idea of what's going on.
That could even be a nice way to wrap it together. So I think we're going to have all the department heads come in. And this year, we're going to pick that back up again. So maybe once we make, you know, if you look at the last, or I think it's Appendix A of the Boards and Committee document, departments are responsible for each of the committee as like a liaison. So maybe we could even make that part of their, of their department head update is giving like a board, you know, if a chair or board wants to come in or if they want to give an update on their behalf because some of them may be more lengthy than others. You know, that's a way that we could, we could work in that, that update as well.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think I like that. I think that's probably the most time-efficient way for everyone to hear from those committees through whoever their assigned liaison is. And then if they want to come in, you know, we can certainly do that. So maybe Seth, I don't know if you want to take this offline. And, you know, I don't want to put this on your lap, but I think it's a great idea. And like I said, I like us all having certain projects instead of, you know, kind of me just dictating what we're doing. So do you want to take that and kind of give it some thought and talk to them? And maybe come back to us with what you'd like to propose and we can see if it all works?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, great.
And you know what, Leah? Can I make a suggestion too? If, I can hear a little bit of hesitation of us voting on this tonight from you and a little bit of hesitation.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not ready to vote tonight, I don't think.
Yeah, I was going to say, what's the harm in letting town, you know? I mean, it's vacation week, you know? The fact that Bill couldn't get a hold of him today, I mean, you know, I don't think it's going to be any big deal if we wait till next meeting to actually take the vote.
No, there's no rush.
Yeah, then we could have just a stamp of approval there too.
Yeah, and just know for anyone that's watching this, that is on a board or committee that was reappointed, you know, you'll be getting those letters in the next couple of weeks. You'll come in and get sworn in. This will be part of it. You'll be able to review it online. So just know that that'll be coming. And I think if you are a chair, this is going to be a great reference for you to do your job too. There's sample agendas. You know, there's a lot of, besides it being, you know, here's a social media policy and civility and all that. There's, it's a great resource for people who may be new or old chairs to just have everything in one place. And I think we're going to do chair training too. We kind of talked about maybe formally doing something where if someone's a new chair to a board or committee or maybe has never done training, we talked about maybe doing that in September with town council as well. And that can be open to anyone. Maybe someone who's a vice chair wants to be a chair one day, you know, to come to that training. I think there's no harm in coming to that.
One thought we had about training is that we would actually do a live session, but tape it. And then that way, anybody who couldn't see it could actually see it. You know, we'll provide the access to it online so they can see it that way.
Yeah, we can post that right on the same link with everything under Boards and Committees. So I'm excited about getting some of that chair training. I know, you know, when you're new and especially some of these smaller boards and committees, there's, you know, you don't have the town manager sitting in the meeting with you kind of helping you move things along. So I think the training will be a good thing for many people.
And we'll be prepared at your next meeting to talk a little bit more about what the structure of that training would look like.
Okay, great. So let's make that an agenda item for next week to get a save the date out to folks. I think we're thinking after the summer. It will be a little bit too hard, I think, to wrangle people together. Maybe do this in September, once everyone kind of gets back to business and get a save the date out there and then get this handbook approved.
Great, thank you.
All right. So I think we're ready to move on to the next item, which is town trash discussion. So we have a citizen come in under Citizens Input and talk about town trash. And as many of you know, during Citizens Input, we can't respond or have any sort of discussion. So since a citizen brought this to us, I thought it was worth putting on our agenda just to talk about. I don't think that the intent here is to go this way or that, but to react to what the citizen brought up and talk about options. And, you know, do we want to do anything? Do we not want to do anything? So I think I'll turn it over to Bill, if you're ready, just to kind of kick off that discussion.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So trash is an interesting topic because it is one that, I think, has as many different options associated with it. I've had, I've worked in a few communities where trash has been handled in multiple different ways. In Foxborough, Foxborough is somewhat unique in the sense that trash is handled entirely by the individual homeowner or business owner in which they contract directly with the individual to do the work. And one of, two of my previous communities, the town itself contracted with the service and provided the service and the cost of the service was rolled into the tax rate every year. To do that now is a very expensive proposition since it's probably, I'd venture to guess that to do trash in this town, you're probably looking at about a $1.5 to $2 million venture to do that, which in and of itself would be a very significant impact on the budget. Wouldn't be something that you would have available in the existing funds, but probably would require an action by the town to do either an override or a, either an override or to defer to a different method, fee-based system, et cetera. So I've worked in a community where it was a fee-based system, where they collected so much from each household per year to pay for the recycling and trash disposal. And then each individual, or for the actual collection aspect of it. And then there was a fee for each bag of trash that was disposed of. So that was a different approach. It was actually one that I actually have myself in the community I live in now. And it works pretty seamlessly. It's a pretty good system. And then the third option that would be, one that would be of consideration, would be one at which the town could in fact go out to bid for, on behalf of the homeowners, to try and secure a bid for services for the homeowners to have, so that they could actually still contract with the service. But it would be contracted so potentially it could reduce the rate at which the trash, the cost would be to the resident or to the business person. So those are several options. I think it's something that bears further discussion and I'm not in a position to recommend one way or the other at this point in time. Obviously, this is the first discussion point. But it's one that requires probably several individuals to discuss. And I would recommend that we perhaps have a group of folks get together and discuss this and come back with some recommendations for everyone. It is a, I will say that having the service where the town contracts for it and pays for it is burdensome at best because, and it also, it really has brought to mind in my own experience an equity issue because you have situations where you have one- and two-person households paying effectively the same rate for people who have five, six, seven people in their household. So you're effectively financing those individuals in that situation. So it does, it raises that equity issue, whereas if you contract for it individually, you pay for the service that you get. And it sort of equalizes that way out. There are also situations where people will, in some instances, and it's unfortunate to say this, but there are people that will take advantage of the trash system and put in items that they'll take items from other locations and put it on the side of the road and have somebody pay for it. And guess who's paying for that? The residents of Foxborough. So I think the system we have now is good for that reason because effectively people don't do that unless, and they know that they're going to pay for it. In fact, if somebody puts somebody on the curb, that doesn't belong to them. So there are different things to talk about. And I think that's why it's difficult to come up with any kind of recommendation tonight. But at least to, out of consideration and respect for the request that was, to at least discuss it. I think it's a very fair and equitable, a fair and reasonable request to at least evaluate it and consider whether or not the town itself is interested in pursuing it further.
Agree. And I think the main thing I have heard, and I don't want to put words in the community's mouth, but I think, you know, what can we do as a town to make sure that we get good service and the best rate possible? So, you know, right now, our citizens are on their own, you know, kind of prices keep increasing, which I understand the prices of recycling and disposal are increasing. You know, but what can we do to use our group purchasing power to hopefully get a better rate, lock in a better rate, and maybe even, you know, get some better, better service? You know, I think that's kind of the gist of it. So I don't think that, at least for me, I don't think that we're looking to put this back in the town budget and kind of reverse necessarily fully what we've done. But how can we improve the process and step in almost as a liaison to make this better for the community? So we have a little bit more research to do on those options, Bill, and then, you know, maybe we come back in a month or so after we've done that and have a further discussion.
I do, like I said, I do think it bears further discussion and consideration because there is something to be said about looking at possibility of us bidding it. Now, I will bring to everybody's attention though, that that was done several years ago. And what came out of that though, because the town doesn't have a bylaw or limitation on this, what happened was when the low bidder actually secured the contract, another individual from Foxborough actually came in and underpriced the individual who got the contract and drove the person out of town. So when that happens, of course, then you have, and now that individual is no longer in that business. So, and so now we're left with a situation which we have very little control over as a town because we don't have, we don't have any sort of contract in place. We have a limited contract in place, but very, very little control over the service itself. So I do think there is something to be said about that.
When does our contract for the town service, I'm not talking the residents, curbside, but for the town service?
That ends up next year, I believe. It's the last year of that service, so.
Okay, so we should, you know, think about that with this as well. I mean, does anyone on the board there have strong feelings one way or the other? We can do a little bit of research and then come back and have more of a discussion on this one?
Yeah, I think, oh, I'm sorry, Seth.
Go ahead.
I think, I mean, there's a reason why I came forward. You know, we always talk about services and, you know, the one thing is this service would just be for everybody. You know, if you live in an apartment or something and the owner there, a lot of times, I don't even know, would an apartment, their trash be picked up by the town?
No, typically would be, they would contract for that circle.
They would contract themselves. I've never rented an apartment myself, so I just wasn't sure. You know, I mean, I'd like to see us look to see, you know, where we are and where our budget is going. You know, I know it's hard to look at that after us going through a COVID year and trying to tighten things up. But, I mean, this is a service that would be for all the taxpayers in town. You know, and I understand what Bill said. You can't just say, okay, there's six people living in this house and two people live in this house. So how do you do that? But if we did, you know, something like your first barrel and then, you know, and then stickers after that or something like that. I mean, I know we'd have to really, we'd have to investigate it a lot. I know what you mean. It's not like tonight, we're really, I don't have an exact direction myself tonight. I'd like us to explore it and see what it would cost the town for us to give, you know, one barrel of trash per household, you know, eventually. That's where I am with it anyhow.
As somebody that, excuse me, one second. As somebody that has used the town's trash system for, I don't know, 35-plus years, the one thing that I think that the vendors have done is to separate very clearly items that are trash from those that can be recycled. And I think that's a plus.
Right.
By having that type of operation, both for not just the people that live in Foxborough, but people around all the communities to properly recycle materials. And I don't know whether a town-only option would have that flexibility that I see from a private vendor that was very attractive to, yes, we've paid a little more, but I like the idea of the service.
Well, there's something to be said about the fact if you're paying for the service that you're, and you're going to do a better job if you're paying less for recycling than you are for trash. So, because trash is very expensive to dispose of right now. And as well as recycling is not all that great either, but it is better. That being the case, if you're the one paying the bill, you're going to be very mindful of your practices. As you thought, you're less likely to do that if somebody else is perceivably paying for the bill.
Indirect.
Indirectly, indirectly. So I just, I'll share with you my experiences, because I've lived through that and I've seen it. I've seen real severe abuses of it, and I've seen situations where it's worked really well. I would say generally speaking, the system here works well. But I do think that having a little bit more control over the process, having either a bylaw or a process in place, which would give the benefit of a buying power to the resident, is a good thing, and something we should explore, because I do think that's probably your most cost-effective approach of doing that at this point in time, without causing huge disruption process in the budget process.
Ben, Seth?
So if I could, just, I just was looking for a little clarity on one of the options that you laid out, Bill. So similar, so we have a model in town for electricity where we can opt in. So is one of the options that sounds somewhat appealing to me is if we as a town negotiate with a vendor for what would likely be a sort of a group rate, and townspeople could opt in if they chose to, because it looked like a better rate, and so people would still have choice, and would still be paying, and still have sort of that skin in the game that you were talking about? But conceivably get a better rate than they'd get on their own?
Right, yeah, something like that would be exactly right. I was thinking exactly along those lines, where you could opt in, but you would have to commit to it for a three-year period, because the reason I say that is because it costs money for the contractor to set up the route here. And so he has to know what his bottom line is going to be each year. And with the cost of trash fluctuating the way it is, if you don't have some commitment as to what your customer base is, it can have a real bad effect on your bottom line if you don't watch that.
Yeah, no, that's fair, I mean, similar except phones or cable, where they get a better rate and you got to commit to a certain amount of time, that's part of the, that's part of the model, so it's to be expected.
And actually, off of what Ed said, I was still thinking of, most of the companies offer recycling. So it wouldn't be just like, we're not going to recycle, I wouldn't go for anything with that, just because how it is now, recycling, and people are used to it. I will say that before UMM came in, or even before it was duly, before UMM, in Summerfield, we had three different companies coming in. That's, you know, we weren't, we weren't part of the town system at one point, and then I think somebody, you know, came up and asked, and they, you know, they were like, yeah, we can get you in with the town service. But the one thing I did find, and it is an incentive for people to recycle, is I was able to go to a one-bag service because of the recycling. The company we originally had didn't recycle, and so all your trash was in one. And then we went to a company, so it cost me just, maybe if you looked at your quarterly bill, was just slightly a little bit higher, but I wasn't having to pay for a second bag, because I was recycling. So I think, to your point, Bill, where there are some people that aren't going to care, just throw everything, throw everything in. But if it was that the town was only picking up one trash barrel, I think he would still get people to recycle, because if they're going to go above, then they're going to have to either buy tags or, you know, pay for two barrels, you know, a week instead of one barrel. So I think if we do even look into it, it's got to be something that has recycling as part of it, which I think most of them do.
I think you're required to by law now in Massachusetts, you're required to.
But I think that keeps, that does keep people a little bit honest about recycling, because otherwise your trash is going to double. I was amazed when we were able to switch to recycling, how much my trash got down, because my original company didn't, we just, you know, everything went into the trash. And then I said, oh my goodness, my trash is really, you don't realize what you can recycle, so, yeah.
So I think, you know, I think everyone realizes in this day and age, you're going to have to pay for trash. It's just a matter, you know, maybe if we pay privately, or if we bring the service back to get some kind of bulk discount, you know, and still pay that maybe to the town, but have some increased, you know, KPIs like you talked about, you know, so maybe hold the trash company to some standards and get us, you know, some kind of bulk rate, and guarantee the vendor, you know, a majority of routes as well. So I think this is something that will, that would probably take a year or two, you know, to get going, but these are the discussions to kick it off and see where we want to go. So if we can keep this one on the agenda, you know, for the next month or two, after we do some investigation and come back with some real options, and see where we want to go with this one.
Thank you, that's all I had.
All right, great, so the next item, sorry, I'm just flipping back to my agenda, is Bill's goals. So we started this discussion last week, sorry, two meetings ago, but I don't think that we were ready to vote on it yet. We have a draft of the goals for 2022. I'm pretty comfortable with them, I don't, did you have the communications plan in there, Bill? I know it was a document.
It wasn't there, should be under.
The first document that was in Board Docs, Seth and others that looked in advance, had the 2021 goals and then the 2022 goals, so you could see what changed. And I had asked, you know, can we get a clean document with just 2022, so that can be the document that we approve and, you know, continue with us throughout the year? So that's what's in Board Docs here.
So if you look under goal two, promote and enhance communication through community engagement, under B, it says finalize the town's communication strategy.
Okay, very great. That's obviously, you know, one of my big goals. So Seth, I think I'll turn it over to you first to get your thoughts. I'm okay with what we see here, we have the same four main goals, but we've taken out, revised, and added some of the sub-goals within and tried to condense them down a little bit. So I'll get your reaction first, Seth, and see if you're okay with this, or have any comments?
Yeah, I think, so I looked at the version with the 2021 to the 2022, and so you could see that they were condensed and sort of slimmed down to a more manageable set of goals and objectives. And everything looks reasonable and aligned with the direction of, that we're trying to move for the town, broadly speaking, so I think everything looks solid from my perspective.
Steph, Ed, I'll let you guys, you know, whatever, where you want to go in?
The only one, I mean, like Seth said, we did some, I found when I was doing Bill's evaluation, there were some that I just felt didn't really fall into him, I know when we put them together. So the only one that I still thought maybe a little sketchy to be under Bill was, duh, 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 let's see, promote more, modern professional town operations, the continue to support policymakers and planning director and the efforts for the housing production plan. I'm just not really sure if that's Bill's goal, or if that really is still just Paige's goal. I mean, we don't, we don't even have, I mean, we've seen it in draft form. I'm just wondering if that's a little premature, only because I feel like this goal is saying for him to support it, where some of the discussion, when Paige came before us, you know, listen, I don't talk to everybody around town, but a lot of people I've talked to don't really support the housing production plan in its draft form. So I feel like we're asking Bill to support it, and I'm just not even sure if the people in town support it. I'm just not sure if that's a goal for Bill, or if that just is a goal just for Paige and the planning board to work on that. So I don't know, Bill, how do you feel?
Well, the way I understood it was, my role is to support the efforts, it's not to support the policy. So in other words, in the event that the planning director needs assistance in writing grants or promoting grants, or writing letters of support, or providing communication or information on various aspects of the town's efforts here, I'm there as a resource to serve as, the policy ultimately comes down to the town, and the board's to make that policy. I'm there to support the effort, not to define it.
Yeah, this is one, I'm okay with it going away, but I will say, when I did Bill's review last year, I actually called out in praise that he, you know, didn't push it through and adjusted to what citizens were saying and the pace that the project was going in, and supported the efforts in that way. So from what I understand, we do need a housing production plan for certain grants. So we as a town do need a housing production plan. The debate is what's in that housing production plan. So we can have a housing production plan that says we're going to do nothing, and then we check the box, we have a housing production plan. So from what I understand, Bill, I still think we need one, it's just a matter of what is in it, is what you need to support Paige.
If you look at goal four, it's on the subsection E, it says continue to support policymakers and the planning director in the efforts to create and implement a successful housing production plan. So it's not to actually define the plan, it's not to tell people what the plan is going to be, it's to support the efforts.
So I think, Steph, you're confusing a little bit what's in the plan with having one, because we do need one to get certain grants, like, you know, with certain grants, you need to have certain things in order to kind of pass go. So I don't want to confuse this with the content of a housing production plan, which is that we do need one down the road, and I think the shelf life is like five or 10 years, but it's not to be debated with what's within.
Okay.
Is that okay by you? As long as you understand that, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, I mean, I get it, I just felt that, that that was kind of really fell under Paige. There were a couple with your goals last year that I think when we were doing, I think even when you and I talked, I just kind of said, oh, I said, you know, I didn't really have a way to score you either way, because I just felt like it just wasn't yours, you know, and I know we've cut those out. So that one in my head, I just felt like that was to implement that successful housing production plan. I think I didn't, maybe I didn't read the front of it as much, other than to implement a successful housing production plan. I just thought that was, that would fall into Paige. So I'm okay, you know, either way, I just, yeah, I just thought that was, that should be a Paige goal myself.
All right, Ed, any comments?
No, I feel that Bill has the capacity to come up with ideas for the community and to see them through, and I felt that it was appropriately discussed when we did his evaluations.
All right, great, so I think the only one in my eyes, under discussion of the one, is the one that we were, you know, just talking about, about the housing production plan. I'm okay with it staying or going, Bill, I don't know if you feel passionately either way, want to approve the sizes, or if you want to remove that one?
I'm fine with leaving it in, only because for the main factors, I want to be able to support Paige and her efforts. And I think it's important that she knows she can turn to me, and I'm going to do that for her as, you know, as the day-to-day operations person. So I think, I see that as something that she, I mean, we talked about, actually today about something associated with that, that she needs me to help write a letter for. So I'm happy to, you know, to continue in that effort, to support that role. But again, ultimately, the policy falls to the policymakers being, that being the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, et cetera, so the ones that are going to define how housing is going to be built in the community.
All right, great, and like I said, you know, just from my perspective, I commended Bill, you know, that he was able to bend and flex on that particular goal. So you can still be successful at something if it doesn't work out the way you thought at the end of the year, if you did the right thing. Yes, Seth?
Just a suggestion then, perhaps we could leave it in. It sounds like there's actual work to do behind that from Bill's perspective. Over time, perhaps there's less work for Bill to help with the creation and implementation, and potentially that becomes sort of a NA or not applicable at a certain point. And even if it's this year, if it's on there and he has, he has the ability to implement and provide support, it sounds like there is work there. So potentially we leave it in, and then as it becomes less meaningful, we could back off of it.
We actually do a six-month review anyways, so we'll see how things are going, and at that point, I'll give you an indication of where things are going. At some point, if, but as Leah correctly points out, we really do have to have a plan. So the question is, you know, if there are things in the plan that people disagree with, the plan could say X. We can't do Y, obviously, so we have to at least put the plan together that the community can live with.
Yeah, and it sounds like Paige needs the support.
Right.
Yeah, I just think for me, I went to a couple of the meetings, and, you know, and I said it right here, to Paige, there was a lot of that plan that I myself did not support at all, and I know a lot of people that didn't. So I guess maybe that's why, as I read it, was, I don't want to be that we're, that Bill is getting behind this plan, like you said, the people are going to decide. But the plan as the draft we had seen, I know a lot of people didn't support it. So I, that's why I was like, Paige needs to take the info that's given to her and work her magic, because that's her job. And I just, when I read it, I kind of felt like what we had done was what we want to push forward. And I just didn't feel that was, that was what I heard at some of the meetings. So maybe I just read it wrong, you know, compared to how Bill was explaining it, like why he wants to. You know, I just kind of read it like the plan we have in draft form, that isn't something I personally want to see pushed forward. I think that plan needs a lot of work.
Yeah, there are two different things.
I read it wrong.
The plan as written is one thing, that's something still left for debate, and I think that's still being evaluated. But it's the effort to develop a plan is really the key, and that's where my role comes in with Paige.
Okay. Or if we don't need one, so I don't want to get down a rat hole in the content of the housing production plan, because I don't think that's what the goal is, it's about making it whatever is right for the town, whatever that is. And this is by no means meant that Bill's goal is to push or approve the housing.
And I think maybe that's where, for me, it didn't sit well, because I, you know, and that's just my opinion. What I, I didn't support it, and I just felt like when I read it through, it was almost like, okay, well, so I may have been putting the two things in my head together.
I think if the goal had been to that the town manager shall support the housing production plan as written, that'd be a different discussion. I mean, but that's not what we're talking about here, this way, it's just more or less producing the document itself, and then providing it as a sample document for the community to debate and decide which is what you want to do. We don't get involved in the debate part, I'll provide you the information and the resources.
So the only thing I think that we're missing here, and I definitely found myself going back and looking at this last year, Mike, was the dates at the top of the town manager goals and objectives. So we had the date that the Board of Selectmen approved it, and then we had the date of the review period on here. So, you know, does it make sense that it's July 1st to June 30th? You know, we talked a lot about when does this end, and with the board turning over, do we want to keep this happening, you know, in a certain month? I'm kind of indifferent, whatever you recommend, I'm okay with, but I do want to shore up the date that this is approved on the document and the date of the review period on the document.
Sure, so, you know, I think we just need to pick up from the day after his last review, and then go to what the board and Bill decide, whether that's June 30th or, you know, in the past, I think we talked about his had gone the 12-month period, April to April, because that's when he had initially been hired, but it doesn't necessarily have to follow that. But we do have to pick up from the day after his last evaluation finished. That's the starting point, and I think the board and Bill could decide whatever's best, and then we can put those dates up there, so that's filled in and clear.
So I think that was like around May 15.
I just want to memorialize it on the document, because I myself, found myself going back to look at the dates. Yeah, I just, I just wanna memorialize it on the document, because I myself, found myself going back to, to look at the dates a couple times when I was doing the review, um, during the year.
So, yeah, my, one suggestion might be that you make the goals effective from June 1st through, um, May 31st? Does that work?
Yeah, if someone rolls off the board, though, that's the only thing is, they will miss the review period and the new person who's elected in May would likely come on.
So, what you, what you, how that worked the la, this past year is that Chris actually did the evaluation, but turned it in afterwards.
Did it go till May, though? I'm trying to look, look up my document real quick, I feel like it might have gone.
I think it went to, I think it went to April 30th, if I'm mistaken.
I think it went to April 30th, so we're just gonna be pushing it a month.
Yeah, so the question is, do you wanna go to a different month, different lineup? I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I mean, if you wanna go to April 30th, it's fine with me, because, you know, we're already well underway on a lot of these things anyway, so.
What's the date on your contract, Bill? I think it should align to
Uh, my, oh, it's, uh, it's June 30th, it's July 1st through June 30th.
Okay. So, I mean, I think it makes sense to go to, to June 30th, but, because that's, well, no, let's leave it. I, I think May, May 30th makes sense, or May 31st.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my take on it, if everyone's okay with that, just adding those dates to it.
Yeah, because it, the, even if I, if I, if I become eligible for an increase, it isn't effective until July 1st anyways.
Yeah, I, I like, I like that timing.
And it pushes for, for a, a, a whole month later of whoever
Past town meeting.
If somebody is going off the board.
Right.
You know, I mean, it doesn't mean they still can't do it, but I think the timing, even, even though Chris technically was off the board, he was
He still did
The whole, the whole, the whole year, yeah.
He just still does the evaluation, so it's not
Exactly.
So, I think, you know, it, it gets you past town meeting, which is always important too, because, you know, you don't wanna be doing that. And we then, we were kinda rushing through it to get through it before town meeting. So, if you get past town meeting, you, you do the review, it's effective, um, you know, through May 31st. And then, uh, you do the evaluation period through, through June. It's done.
Yeah, it always felt clunky having the review period end right in the middle of budget season, like hot budget season. So, I think, I think May 31st makes sense. So, if we can, you know, add the date that we approved it and the date of the review period to this, I'm okay to approve this as is.
Okay, I'll add those.
So, do you need a motion to have it effective?
Yeah.
Ready, Leah?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, um, motion to approve the fiscal year, um, 2022 town manager goals as appended with the dates just discussed.
A second. Any further discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Seth is yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes. All right, great, so now we're on to assistant town managers update, and then we'll go right into Bill's town managers update.
Uh, we just had one notary services update, uh, oh, I'm sorry, that's something, sorry about that, apologize.
Sure, just, um, um, two recent hires I wanna tell you about, and then I wanna talk a little bit about notary services. So, um, we, last couple of meetings, we've talked about payroll administrator, um, position as one that we've had advertised and, and one of the other ones being the benefits administrator. So, last week, um, Melanie O'Regan started, uh, excuse me, two weeks ago as our payroll administrator. And, um, and today Julie Lavoy started as our benefits administrator. So, we're really happy to, uh, welcome them on board and they've already hit the ground running. I haven't had a chance to check in with Julie today, because it's been a pretty busy day, but I've had a number of interactions with Melanie and she's, uh, she's working really hard and, and working out really well, um, for the town. So, we're very happy to have, uh, both of them on board. Notary Services is the one other update I wanted to give. And so, Notary Services is a, is a, um, service that we provide through the town clerk's office. And it is a, um, it's a courtesy, courtesy service, so in other words, the town is not required to, to provide this service, but it's something that, um, that the, the town clerk's office, uh, does wanna provide and, um, and that, that we in the administration, uh, feel that it is, you know, worthy of providing. And, you know, and, and we had, um, we talked it over with Leah last week during a, a meeting and, um, you know, she, she, she did agree, but really said, this is something that needs to go back to administrative, this is an operational issue. So, we're working with the town clerk, clerk's office, we're all headed in the right direction. And as, as many of you, uh, or any of you that were looking for, um, notary services over this past year, might have found, we had to suspend those services, one, because of building closure, two, because of, um, just being able to provide, to provide the, the minimum required services, that's what we were focused on. Now, we're at a point where we wanna open up those services, um, uh, as, as much as we can within, you know, what's allowed by statute. And, um, so the, the town clerk, Bob, has, uh, has put some guidelines together. We're gonna take and, uh, and put those out. He'll have them on, um, on the window at the town clerk's office, we'll also put them up on the website. But the one thing that he's requested is that, um, this is something that they do in addition, in addition to their regular required services. So, if folks wouldn't mind just calling ahead to make an appointment and they'll, they'll have somebody ready in the town clerk's office, ready to work with folks, and at that time, they'll let you know what you need to bring in and, uh, review briefly over the telephone, you know, what kind of, um, documents that they, that they can notarize. Um, and then answer any questions that, uh, residents may have, um, in that regard. So, this is, uh, this discussion has come up at this time, uh, because we, we found out that the, um, actually, Bob found out through his organization that, um, that insurance costs were going up and notary services are, are one of the things that weren't gonna be caught under our regular insurance liability umbrella. You know, and, and that's same, same across the state, so it's not just us. So, what we did is, is we did, uh, three things in, in preparing to reopen our notary services that we know that, you know, many of our residents, you know, do, do turn to us for. Although these services are also available in banking institutions and other places, where one of the places that the people can turn. So, the one thing we did is we turned to our town council, um, to, to find out, you know, what's required, um, what is not allowed, and then what are other people doing that, that he's representing. We asked Bob to go out to other, uh, towns within his association and find out, you know, what are, what are other communities doing and how are they doing it? And then the third thing we did was reached out to Maya, which is our insurance provider, to find out, you know, what's really going on and, and why is it happening? So, uh, we did find out from town council that in fact, uh, we're not required to provide this service, as we are with many of our other services. But that within that, if we choose to do that, we could charge a fee, um, for those services. We could request donations for those services, or we could provide them as part of the, um, services that, you know, that, that we provide to the, to general public as, as part of their tax rate. You know, the second thing, uh, Bob, along with Katie from our office, went and reached around, uh, through his association and through Katie's contacts, um, through the, you know, executive assistant world to find out what, uh, what other communities are doing. And we found that, uh, most, most other communities similar to us are, um, providing these services or preparing to reopen those services. And most, but not all, are not charging a fee for them. And the third thing we did is we got a price from Maya, who, uh, is not directly providing this, but they've got a, um, a third-party insurer that, that is going through them, uh, providing the service. And we found out that this service, uh, the insurance premium for the year is $932. It's something we haven't paid before. But in, in talking over with our office, we, we think that this is something that we would like to provide, uh, to the community. And, um, at this point, we're not looking to, to charge, uh, an extra fee to do that. We think that's part of, uh, basic services we would like to provide, even though that's not required. With that, I would take any questions you might have.
Do you require proof of residency?
Good question, let me look at his, his guidelines, um.
I think you provide a license, I think you have to provide a license when you do it.
You do have to provide a, a government-issued ID. I don't know if he specifically says on there, does the address have to show that it's in Foxborough?
Yeah, if it's an out-of, out-of-town service, out-of-town, uh, I'm not, not sure it would be, we should, it should be free. If we're providing it, yeah, if we're providing it, you know, so that's a good, fair point.
Because I think, like, say, say you go over to the bank, um, if you're a customer there, do they do a few for free if you're?
I think it's three bucks, something like that.
Okay, something like, like I know, I know, just for example, TD Bank, um, because I've been a customer there for a long time, maybe it's, you know, um, how much business you do with them, whatever, like, they don't charge me for bank checks. Where if you came in, if you're someone else, I think they're seven dollars. So, I did, I, I, I've never had anything notarized there. Um, I didn't even realize we did it here, but I was just, just curious if, um, if, if you went to the bank, is it free too? Is that why somebody would come here?
Sure, so I can answer that question for you. Most banks, um, you know, you, you'll, you'll get it for a no charge or a nominal charge, like Bill said, three dollars. My bank is no charge, uh, be, because I have an account there. But, um, we had somebody come recently who, uh, because we had closed that service during COVID, they had to go elsewhere and it cost them $10, because their bank was not open, so they went to another bank, they didn't have an account. So, some places you may pay $10, uh, for that service. So, um, you know, I think that's reasonable that we, um, and I will talk this over with, um, with the town clerk and, and also run it past town council to make sure we're not running afoul and all there. But I mean, it seems reasonable if, if tax, uh, money is, is paying to provide this service, that it should be, uh, residents and taxpayers and, and resident businesses that are, um,
Yeah, I think it's nice that it's not required of us, but we feel like it's just been a nice service that we have provided, that we, that we do continue with, but I, I think it's, it's, um, nice of Bob's office. And Mike, you put this together and say, okay, let's just, let's just do it for the residents, even though we don't necessarily have to. It's a nice, nice touch too. And just off a little bit, um, quick question, just because I know there was something they dropped. Are we going back with passport service at all, or, I just know that dropped, that dropped too.
We could be getting back to that, just that we have, we've had a change in staff recently, so, so we need to, to train those folks to, to provide that service. So, um, it may take a little longer than, than we, than we have, but because we have to train.
Just out of curiosity, kinda a little off, off, off that subject, but just something that I know we, we went off because of COVID and staffing and whatnot, just wondering if it was eventually gonna come back.
And that's one that it, it would be a while, because the, the training and testing for that is, is, is a bit extensive, because they've got, you know, um, it, it's, it's gotta be, well, there's some requirements that we'd have to go through, um, to do that, but, so.
But I think it's, it's, it's important to note, though, that, um, that, that the notary service will not be in place for all documents. For instance, you know, um, one of the reasons why there were, there was some hesitancy towards doing it from town clerks association perspective was that there were a couple cases where communities would, they, they tried to hold, hold communities liable for providing the service to notarize closing documents for certain situations. And, um, for whatever reason, the situation went bad, and then, and then they tried to hold the town accountable for the notary service. So, that's why there's, there is insurance coverage now for that type of thing. But it's also because, and then, so we, we're trying to limit the exposure on that by not sort of, not, not notarizing every document that comes through. So, there, there'll be some limitations to that.
So, when that, when that, uh, guidance is put out, you know, at the town clerk's office and, and on the website, it'll, it'll have some of the details on, you know, what's needed and, and what can be provided. And, um, and the same thing from the, from the insurance world, you know, they're, they're exposed. And when they start getting town clerks and other notaries in municipalities called into court, not that they're, you know, providing any legal advice or anything like that on a notary, they're just watching somebody's signature and making sure that the ID matches. But there have been people subpoenaing at the court, did you check an ID? And, uh, so there's kind of the, the risk. And that's all I have for an update.
All right, great, Bill, anything for yours?
Um, just a few things, um, so as you might notice, there's a lot of people taking vacation right now. It's the end of the fiscal year, so it's Happy New Year, or in the new fiscal year. Fiscal '22 has actually officially begun. There is a meeting with Congressman Arkin Kloss on Thursday of this week, at 3:00. Uh, I know members of the board will be in attendance, you know, along with the planning director, town engineer, and DPW director, myself and Mike, uh, for an opportunity to meet with him and then to review the, uh, the, the earmark that he's been sponsoring in Congress, uh, for about $2 million, which will help with the, what, with the Walnut Street intersection. So, uh, so we'll be taking care of that on, for, on, on Thursday this week. Also, those folks in, in town, this is, that were looking for fireworks at Gillette Stadium on, on, uh, this weekend. Obviously, the weather didn't cooperate on July 4th, so they were moved to July 24th, as I understand it. So, uh, which is really the official start date of the, the NFL training camp. So, anybody who's interested in, in seeing those, anybody in the community who's interested in seeing those, that's the new, that's the new date for weather permitting, of course, uh, for the fireworks here in Foxborough. And, um, Jess at the stadium, who was, um, gonna be here tonight, is, uh, about to have a new addition in her family. So, I, we wanna wish her all the best. Hopefully, uh, things will go well for her over the next 24 to 48 hours. And we'll wish her all the best and, uh, hope that, uh, everything works as, works as planned. Okay, that's my, that's my update, ma'am. Gee, I, I am away, like I said, next week, uh, for the whole week, so if, and I will be out of state, but, uh, but my phone's always on, as you know, so if you need to reach me, feel free to call me.
Leave you alone.
All right, great, I could be losing it, but did we announce, I know we sent an email out to all the boards that, that saves the date for the financial summit of October 13th? Did we publicly get that thing out there?
I think we did.
I can't remember if we did or not, but anyway.
I did, I received
We did save a date, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I know we sent it out internally, but I don't know if we've announced it at the selectmen's meeting. But I, it's definitely in my calendar. All right, um, next is selectmen's update. So, Bill, why don't you give us the CIP update that's, that's here as well?
Okay, so, so the, the CIP plan that was, uh, I'm actually gonna have to defer that to Mike, because Mike was actually at the meeting, so he can, he can provide that for you.
Sure, so we did meet with the, um, the capital improvement, uh, planning committee, um, on the, the 30th, the last day of the fiscal year, and, um, to, to discuss and vote, uh, the approval of, of $95,000 for a used ambulance to supplement what we have. And what spurred that was a number of things. So, as folks will remember, town meeting did approve, uh, a new ambulance. And, but, but we, we won't be receiving, uh, that until, for 18 to 22 months, for a number of factors, one of which is the shortage of, of chips for vehicles, that's kind of a nationwide, probably worldwide problem. The other is that once a vehicle, um, you know, heads our way with, with public safety, um, vehicles, there's still another step, which, which is putting in all the specialty equipment, the radios and, and so forth. So, a new vehicle is a long ways away, as far as an ambulance.
Mike, excuse me, two.
Uh, two, excuse me.
Yep.
Two ambulances. So, those won't be here for, you know, in excess of a year and a half. So, we have three ambulances here. And we have, um, they're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you rough numbers, but, oh, here we go. Uh, one's, uh, 2018 with 100,000 miles. Another one's 2015 with 130,000 miles, and the 2012 has 145,000 miles. And, and that's, that's current mileage, and so add on a year and a half to that, and so we're pretty high mileage. And then the, kind of, kind of the last factor is that two of the three were in accidents over the last several weeks, each of which, um, the, the other driver was cited as being at fault. So, I just wanna be clear that our, our ambulance drivers aren't driving negligently, negligently, but it's taken, you know, two, two of our three ambulances out of service. With, you know, you know, up to several weeks to get, to get them fixed and back on the road. And, you know, again, they're, they're aging. We, we were looking for, the chief was looking for a backup plan. How do we get from here to 18 months or so? And he, he needed a backup plan for this immediate several-week period, uh, but also to get him to that 18 to 22. But also to get him to that eighteen to twenty-two month period to make sure that we're able to provide ambulance services to the community. So the meeting was scheduled, Bill was away, I, I attended and ran the meeting in his, in his, while he was away. And we solicited questions from the, from the board members, from AdCom and Board of Selectmen members. And then we, I forwarded those questions to the fire chief to, to look into and to, to show up with the, with the answers, and, which he did. He also showed up with about a, I guess it's about a four or five, six page document, laying out the history of these, of these three ambulances, as well as some pictures on what's going on with them of, of late. Well, I'll mention this and then get back to how the meeting went. We did have two ambulances out at a training exercise within the last week. One was what they call in, in the bay at the fire station, which means it can respond to calls. The other one runs, has four wheels and an engine, and they were able to get out to the training site. But is not capable of return, of, of making medical calls at this point, until some more work is done on it. So if anyone saw two ambulances out there, we've actually got one still in service. So the, you know, after, after a discussion, and Stephanie was there and represented the board along with, you know, Chief O'Leary, who's, who's a named member of the CIP committee and the rest of the CIP committee members, you know, we, we took questions. All the questions were, were answered, discussed. And, and it was decided unanimously by the CIP committee that it was in the best interest of the town, the residents of the town of Foxborough to, to buy this used ambulance and get it shipped here from the state of Michigan, so that we could provide those services. That ambulance was supposed to have arrived today, and I hope it did arrive today. Our insurance coverage on that did start today, so that we can get that, as soon as we've got plates on it, we can get it into service and get us back to at least two on the road. And then when we get, you know, one more out of mechanical, mechanics work and get eventually a third one back on the road. So that's what happens with the, with the CIP. In all, ninety-seven thousand and two hundred dollars were, were voted unanimously to, to buy this used ambulance. And the, the twenty-two hundred dollars was to have, to have it delivered here, driven, driven across the country under, under the seller's liability and costs, other than, you know, the twenty-two hundred we provided. And then, once we take ownership of it, then, or actually take, you know, we get it handed off to us, then it's under our insurance, our liability. So I'd be open to any questions from any members of the board.
Just, just one, one piece of added information, it's for the, for the benefit of the public, is a part of the reason why we're having such difficulty with ambulances and accidents more, a stepped up level of accidents, is because they're traveling a lot longer distance than normal. Norwood Hospital has in fact closed as of last June, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, so they've been closed over, over a year now. That has impacted not only Foxborough, but just about every community in this region, who actually normally travel to Norwood for emergency responses. It doesn't look like that's gonna rectify itself anytime soon. I was actually with the town administrator and general manager from, from Norwood just about two weeks ago, and he indicated that they still have not resolved the insurance issues associated with that claim. So that's, that's well over a year before they even, and they haven't even started construction to either repair or identify the, the new use for that property, one way or the other. So that is something that, it's gonna take a while before we resolve that, which means that we're gonna continue to incur a lot of, lot of additional mileage on the vehicles in order to transport people to, to hospitals. And it's unfortunate to say this, but I do think that a lot of people prefer to go to the Boston hospitals as opposed to going to hospitals in this region. You know, obviously, to the extent that we can provide service in this region, we certainly will do that. But there is, there is, when individuals tell us where they want to go, we have to take them there. And there's, there's a fair amount of people that, that like to go in that direction.
I thought we got a communication, maybe I saw it through being a Stuart patient, that there was a commitment to rebuild at that site that was official.
If it was, it happened within the past week because they had not communicated, I haven't, I haven't heard that from them directly. Did you see something?
Yeah, I feel like we got a press release that they're committed to rebuilding at that site.
They, they've said that, they said that generally speaking, but they haven't specifically made any commitment to doing that as of yet. And they even, kind of Norwood is actually anxiously waiting that.
Still, and even if they have made the commitment.
If they do, you're talking, you're still talking, you're talking two to three years from now.
Absolutely. But at least it's a commitment, you know, for a nice community, community area hospital.
Thank, thank you for mentioning the Norwood Hospital. That was on page one of Chief Kelleher's letter. I should have gotten that right out there, because it was, it is one of the critical factors. Because, you know, he did talk at the meeting about sometimes the turnaround time is, you know, five hours. You know, depending with three to five hours, depending where they're going. And, you know, sometimes it's, it's the patient's choice. Sometimes it's where's the available service that they need.
Yeah. The type of, type of nervous needs they have.
So they, they can't, they can't request to go to Boston, can they?
They can request, they can request to go there. Now, now, having you said that.
Usually I thought you have to be transported to the closest hospital. Unless, unless, like, okay, for example, I know if we called nine-one-one for Jimmy, because he's a transplant patient, he, he needs to go to Tufts, unless it's, unless it's like, you know, life or death, he needs to be, be at a hospital. But if it's something really with his kidney, you know, he was told, you just tell them, you know. They don't have the services at the small local hospital that he would need if it was that. Now, if he was having a heart attack, he's going wherever, you know, wherever they bring, but they don't get to ask to.
No, you're exactly right, Stephanie. It's, they, they're required actually to go to the closest adequate hospital.
That provide that service though. That's the issue. That's the key.
Yeah. So it's like just simple emergency room, you know, or something. But with that being said, I'm sure they call and, you know, the hospital may bypass them somewhere else too.
Well, they may be tied up, they may be tied up with other claims or other, other cases, yeah.
Just to close out that CIP item too, I think during that meeting, you guys approved some meeting minutes. We just need to make sure those get uploaded to the CIP page as well.
We didn't actually vote the, the minutes, so they were on the agenda. But, but a member of the committee actually hadn't seen the, the minutes. And I think that's actually, it was two members of the committee didn't, didn't see the minutes. And I think it was because we had to go out with two amendments for that agenda, it, it wasn't seen. So the, the minutes, the draft minutes are done. So at the next CIP meeting, there'll be three sets of, of minutes to do, including the, the meeting that was just done.
Okay. Three sets of meeting minutes takes us back a while, back to twenty-twenty, I think. So I, you know, I guess I'll leave it up to the committee if it's worth having a meeting to get some things approved and cleaned up. You know, there's been a lot of talk about CIP this year, and I think we want to clean up that bylaw. So I know during, during town meeting, it came up that someone went to go look at minutes. I think Mr. Quinn had said that, and, you know, they're not out there. And I know it's through no one's, no one's fault, but maybe, you know, that's something that we, that we have a meeting for. You know, when the next CIP meeting will be, will be a long time to wait for that, so.
We, we probably would have another one. We're gonna have one at least before the fall town meeting. So you're looking, yeah, it won't, yeah, it won't be, it won't be as long, I think, as you're, as you're thinking, maybe in the spring. It will be in the fall, yeah.
All right, great. Sorry, I didn't realize that you guys didn't approve those, so I was just looking for them. All right, um, under selectmen's update, the only thing I wanted to, go ahead.
Oh, if I may, Leah, so just a quick point perhaps. So there'll be citizens who see that we're purchasing another ambulance, and they'll, there'll be concern around budgetary, budgetary concerns, budget creep, if you will, meaning like we're, we're buying another ambulance, here we go. And so I, I just want to ask, I think that this, I understand the, the reason to do it. This fits in with our plan, our safety plan, if you will. And let me just clarify, we have, does the plan include two active ambulance plus one sort of backup? And does this fit in? I think this fits into that, and I just want to make that explicit, that this fits into our plan of, of, we're not increasing service capacity, we're maintaining service capacity.
That's correct. We are not increasing, in fact, if anything, it's a, it's a decrease, but it's giving us some level of, of continuous service. And the reason I say decrease is that our ambulances that our paramedics work out of are F-550, the big box truck, full capable advanced life support. The one that, that just came here is more of a van type ambulance, so they can still do medical response. But it's, it's not, so, you know, new big box ambulance, you're talking half a million dollars. Whereas this is for the money and for something that's, you know, it's on a brand new chassis, so it's a, it's a solid vehicle. But it's not gonna get us, you know, forever. It'll probably be a trade-in at some point, but it's gonna give us that intermediary safety cushion. But it's, it's not an expanded service, it's actually a bit of a shrunk service from what we've been used to, unfortunately.
And actually, Mike, I, I just thought of a question that I, I, like you said, I sent off a bunch of questions, and Chief Kelleher, you know, answered them all. Just while we were talking about like the trips to Boston, are we gonna, and I'm not even sure how much we're doing it. I know it came up at one point when the chief was thinking about getting another ambulance to help with transport from bringing women to Patriot Place in town. So we're kind of laying off that too, right? So, so I, I'm just wondering if you guys, if either you or Bill had that part of discussion. Maybe you can answer that. That might maybe is another question for Chief. I just thought of it now as far as, so the goal is really just for our residents.
So I can, I can answer it just based on the CIP, and then Bill or the chief could answer better on that larger issue.
Yeah.
This was really just to address the immediate issue of keeping ambulance services running. It had nothing to do with going outside of town of Foxborough.
Yeah.
Personally, I think it's not a bad idea, since those services pay for themselves and pay for our equipment and people. But this decision had no, you know, didn't touch that at all. So I don't know if Bill can talk about that, or if that's something you want Chief to talk, get a future.
Right. I think I'd want to talk with the chief first to see what his plan, if any. I mean, we, there's been no approved plan to do that at this point.
Yeah.
So it's been talked about as a possibility, but we, but there's no approved plan to do that at this point.
Guess the last thing, in case anybody was wondering, where did the money come from on this? And why June thirtieth was so important, one, because of those two accidents. But the other is because that was the end of the, of the last fiscal year. And, and most of the money, in fact, all of the money was used from last fiscal year. So most of it was from apparatus revolving funds. And then there was a small amount, I want to say twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars in that range, that was, that was actually from their expense money left from FY twenty-one. Chief, do you remember the, the, Chief, Chief O'Leary, do you remember the amount that was?
I don't recall.
It was in the twenty thousand range that was.
In the twenty thousand range.
Yeah, and all the rest was their apparatus revolving fund.
And that apparatus, apparatus revolving fund was generated by a lot of the services that they provided from other communities, for the repairs that they've done. So that actually, that actually worked to our advantage in this case.
All right, anything else with that item? All right, the only thing I had for selectmen's update is, you know, I know we don't appoint members to AdCom, but we just talked about, you know, the end of the budget season, their appointments went through June thirtieth as well. And a lot of, a handful of folks that have been really important members of the advisory committee for the last few years, I believe, are rolling off. So I know like Bernard Dumont is, is rolling off. He's been an AdCom member for seven years, the former chair, Larry Uwe is done. I think Brian Guilde maybe done, and Tom Freeman, he's, he's come and gone a couple of times. I think his term may be over, I don't know if he's coming back. But just wanted to take a moment, I know we talk so much about, you know, again, just to reinforce how important every committee and board and volunteer that we have is, you know, in town. So just to thank them, because it's a lot of time on AdCom.
And you know, we, I can't even tell you how much I learned, things that I, I thought, how things, maybe you'll reen, what's what I'm saying, Seth, it's like you think, you know, things go a certain way, or the money's spent a certain way. And, you know, it's, it's a big learning experience. So if somebody has some time, it's, it's definitely worth it. It gives you a, a good idea of how your town's money is spent and, and how much time and effort people, you know, department heads, employees of the town put in. So it was, it was a great learning experience for me. You know, so if anybody, well, you're naming four people, so I'm sure Frank is, is looking for some people. So if anybody is, you know, has the, has a little time, it'd be a great thing to, to get into.
Does anyone else have anything for selectmen's update?
I'd just add that I second your appreciation for the advisory committee. And those, each, each of those individuals is really dedicated to the town. So I just wanted to throw that in there for my own perspective. Thank you.
You have worked with many of them, so.
Oh, and actually, Leah, you know something? I wanted to say something the last time, and unfortunately I wasn't here because of death in my own family. But I just, I, and I don't know if anybody said anything from this board, but the McCarthy family lost a member, Brendan, and he, he was a fire chief out in Western Mass. And just to, you know, prayers and thoughts out to the McCarthy family for, for their loss. And he really, there was a lot of medical issues going on the last, last year before he passed. And so, you know, I always like to give that little personal touch or for something that's going on in, in our community and a well, well-loved family of this community too. So I just wanted to throw out thoughts and prayers to the McCarthy family and thank Brendan for, for his time on the, his, his, he was an Easton out in Western Mass, his time on the fire department.
All right, great. Anything else? Then I think we just have three quick action items and ready to adjourn.
Yeah, I think motion's muted on.
Okay, so it's the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the June eight, twenty twenty-one Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Seth is yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
So we have the recon, reconfirming of the Board of Selectmen license fees. Motion to reconfirm, excuse me, motion to reconfirm the Board of Selectmen licensing schedule and fees.
I'll second.
And under discussion, this is, this is kind of one of these housekeeping items that we really hadn't looked at. I think they were approved almost ten years ago. Katie did do a bunch of research and go out to a number of communities to see if we are still in line. I think the feeling is that we are still in line, so at this time, we're not making any changes to fees. We just, you know, did a kind of a market check to make sure we're still where we should be. So, so that's the reason that this item is on the agenda.
This is also a good news item too, in the sense that we're saying to the community, we're not gonna raise fees in this area, given the fact that, you know, it's been a difficult year for a lot of people, and so we're obviously gonna keep, keep things where they were as well.
All right, so any other discussion?
You second? You second, you second, okay.
Yep, we seconded. So I think we're ready for roll call.
Seth, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes.
Okay.
I think the last one, yep.
Motion to approve the August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one Monster Jam event for the craft, sports, and entertainment group.
I'll second it.
So for discussion purposes, this is really the first time, under the new license structure, that you're seeing an amendment to the license. However, the event is not new. It's, it's, it's an event that has been, has happened for several years now. They, they filled out, they've completed all the report, required documentation for it. Nobody, nobody's recommending any, any further changes beyond that. So this is, we treat this almost as a routine matter, but if in the event that any board member had a reason to call for a hearing on it, they could do that. member had a reason to call for a hearing on it, they could do that. But at this point, we don't recommend that.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Seth Ferguson, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes. All right. And then I think we're ready to adjourn. I just want to thank the board for your flexibility. I planned on being there in person up until about an hour before. So it's great that we have this flexible technology. And sorry, we had to roll call everything, but I think we made it through okay.
All good.
Absolutely.
Hope everything goes all right there. Hope everything goes okay.
All right. So just, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we end this meeting.
I will second it.
All right, roll call.
Seth is yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Ed, yes.
Leah, yes. All right, thanks, everyone. See you in two weeks.